My name is Mary Skeens and I'd like to welcome all of y'all to the October 20th Meeting of the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to welcome our newest Commissioner Ted Oliver. Glad to have you. If the other Commissioners would introduce themselves from my right, please.
Stu Nichols.
Betty Turner.
Catherine Maggott.
Warshay Downing.
Paul G. Gilmore, Senior.
And Ted Oliver.
Thank you. Please note that this meeting is being conducted in person and online. And if anyone participating online needs help with Zoom, please email Luke Carter at Lucas, L-U-C-A-S dot Carter at greensboro-nc.gov. Members of this Commission are appointed by the City Council and we do serve without pay. The Commission reviews all original zoning and annexation and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each Commissioner normally visits each site prior to the meeting. The procedure for all public hearings will be as follows. The planning staff will present background information and make a recommendation. The applicant will present a short summary on how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Other persons in favor of the request may speak for a total of 10 minutes and this time is shared with the applicant. Speakers opposed to the request will also share 10 minutes of speaking time. Those in favor of the request will all then share five minutes of rebuttal time and those in opposition to the request will then have five minutes of rebuttal time. Speakers for non-zoning related items like street closures and area plans, of which we have one tonight, will be granted three minutes of speaking time. At the end of the speaking time, we will close the public hearing. Any Commission member may ask questions once a presenter has completed their presentation. All Commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. In an effort to run the meetings more efficiently, the Commission may reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which there is no opposition having been expressed to the Planning Department or in which no speakers have signed up to speak in opposition, Commission members do not feel necessitates an in-depth discussion, those items will be moved to the top of the agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation for those expedited cases and applicants, if desired, will have two minutes to address the Commission, to provide any additional information they want the Commission to know. Expedited cases will then follow the procedures outlined previously. When speaking here tonight, please direct all questions and comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, not to staff. The Commission will then ask staff to comment on any questions the Speaker might have. When a case is called that you're interested in, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If you are participating online, please find and use the raise hand function under the reaction button and you'll be called upon to speak in order in the order in which the hands are raised and you'll also need to give your name and address. All approved or denied cases receiving six or more votes will constitute final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal is paid within 10 days. All cases receiving a majority of favorable votes but less than six will be subject to a public hearing by the City Council. And all cases involving an annexation are also subject to final approval by the City Council. Participants in the Zoom meeting will be able to view the meeting and speak when they are called upon. This meeting is being recorded and televised on Greensboro Television Network. In addition, the telecast is being closed captioned for the hearing impaired. Now we need to hear from our attorney regarding additional items we need to consider.
Thank you Chair Skeens and good evening everyone. Much of the Commission's work this evening is going to relate to the consideration of rezoning applications. I'd like to remind everyone that when the Commission considers rezoning applications, its determinations are based on the land uses that are allowed under the proposed zoning district that's been put forth in the application and any conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. Now, land use impacts on public infrastructure are relevant in rezoning matters. It's important to know that the Commission is not here to determine all details of a development, however. That process involves staff input and evaluation that goes beyond the scope of the Commission's work. If a rezoning would generate a certain amount of traffic flow, the Commissioners will have been provided with a summary traffic impact study. Meanwhile, many site-specific development features such as the means of management of stormwater are evaluated through the Technical Review Committee rather than here in this forum tonight. Lastly, concerns that are not related to land use are not germane to the Commission's consideration of rezoning applications. For example, generalized concerns about crime rates and questions of who may own or live at or use a subject property are not for the Commission's consideration. Rezoning is about what, not who. If there are questions about matters not addressed this evening, those may be referred to the Planning Department or to City Technical Staff as appropriate. Thank you.
In looking over our speakers list, the information we have currently is the following cases will be expedited. If you are here for one of the cases I'm going to read out and you would like to speak in opposition, please raise your hand and we'll do some rearranging. The ones on the expedited agenda for right now are 2882 Fleming Road, 5307 West Market Street, 6 Merith Court, portions of 8318 Lazy Sky Lane and Carlos Way, 105 and 107 South Edwardia, and 801 ZZ, 803 and 815 Roberson Comer Road. Now that also involves an annexation and we are good to go as an expedited? Correct? Okay.
Correct.
Have the folks in opposition to Farlow come online yet? All right, we're going to proceed with the expedited agenda. And if we get to the end of it and we still don't have anybody online for Farlow, then we'll hear it as an expedited case. Okay. So what we need to look now at the approval of the minutes for the September 3rd and the September 15th meeting. I understand there were some questions about the September 3rd ones?
Yes, I just had two corrections on the page where you do 230 North Elm Street. Just above the speaker, would you add the word opposition? And you spelled council wrong in the final sentence there. And then on the last page of the minutes, would you please add in when I was speaking that she said she enjoyed being-
I'm sorry, Ms. May, are you referring to the September 15th being, just to be clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm talking about the minutes. And, sorry. She said she enjoyed being a member of the Commission. I said I enjoyed being the Chair and a member of the Commission. And then I would like to request that the review of the September 3rd special meeting be delayed until next month. I'd like to spend a little bit more time looking at it, if you wouldn't mind. Okay, so we have to make a motion to, for both of that, for the correction on the September 15th and also to delay the September 3rd minutes.
Stu Nichols, so moved as to both.
I'll second it. Catherine Maggott.
Let's, let's, let's take them separately. The September 3rd meeting, there his minutes, there's been a request to delay that for a month for some additional review. Do I hear a motion on that to delay the September 3rd minute approval to November?
Stu Nichols, I move to delay the approval of the September 3rd minutes until the next meeting.
And I second that, Catherine Maggott.
All in favor? Signified by saying aye and raise your right hand, please.
I guess I'll say aye.
Okay, we have one opposed. Okay, we have two. We still have a majority. Yes.
Motion would still carry, 6-2 by my count, right?
Motion still carries. And then the September 15th meetings, we've had some corrections to those minutes. So with those corrections noted, do I hear a motion to approve the September 15th minutes? Motion to approve.
Second, Catherine Maggott.
Okay, all in favor? Signified by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Okay, so those are approved. I do want to acknowledge at this point the absence of Keith Peterson, who's not here yet. So if he comes in, we will acknowledge it at that time. Do we have any withdrawals or continuances?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then we will move into the agenda and it will be the expedited agenda. That first case is 2882 Fleming Road. This is item PL 2538 and zoning case Z 251001. It's an annexation and an original zoning request from County RS 40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III for the property identified as 2882 Fleming Road and a portion of Fleming Road Right of Way, generally described as northeast of Fleming Road and south of Pleasant Ridge Road, 1.59 acres.
Thank you Chair Skeens. I'm just going to share that presentation real quick so that everybody online can see it as well. All right. This is the zoning map which shows that the property contains approximately 0.92 acres and is located southwest of west of, I'm sorry, contains approximately 1.59 acres and is located northeast of Fleming Road and south of Pleasant Ridge Road. This is an annexation and original zoning request from County RS 40 to City R3. Northeast and west of the request are Zone Summerfield RS and south of the request is Zone Summerfield RS and City R3. This is the aerial map of the subject property showing that it contains a single-family dwelling and on all sides of the property are surrounded by single-family dwellings. This is a straight rezoning request so there were no conditions proposed and in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the, excuse me, that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plans, creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed R3 zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate low-density, single-family detached residential development of up to three dwelling units per acre and the request permits uses that are present on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I want to ask the Chair because my screen is showing the City Council materials or-
Press the P, yeah, the presentation.
Presenting presentation.
Thank you so much.
Correct.
Did that work? Great. Thank you. And no questions of staff? Is the applicant here and would they like two minutes to elaborate on the presentation? No. Okay. Without objection, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or discussion? And we'll need two motions on this, one for annexation and one for the zoning.
I'd like to make a motion for the annexation of PLP 25-38.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the annexation. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now on the zoning.
I'd like to make a motion, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its actions to recommend the approval of the original zoning request for property 2882 Fleming Road and a portion of Fleming Road Right of Way from County RS 40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future build format and future land use map. The proposed City R3 zoning district permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent property. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Second, Warshay Downing.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the zoning. All in favor? Signified by saying aye and raise your hand, right hand. Aye. That is also unanimous, eight to zero. Because this involves an annexation, this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Thank you. Next case on expedited is 5307 West Market Street.
Can you read that into the record, Ms. Skeens? Read the description, please.
Well, there it is. Thank you. Item Z-25-10-002. This is a rezoning request from LI Light Industrial to CDCM Conditional District Commercial Medium for the property identified as 5307 West Market Street, generally described as southwest of West Market Street and northwest of South Edwardia Drive. It's 0.92 acres.
Thank you Chair Skeens. This is the zoning map for the subject property, which is approximately 1.59 acres and is located northeast of Fleming Road and south of Pleasant Ridge Road.
Uh-uh.
Sorry about that. This is a zoning map for 5307 West Market Street. Sorry about that.
Okay.
The subject property contains approximately 0.92 acres and is located southwest of West Market Street and northwest of South Edwardia Drive. This is a rezoning request from Light Industrial to CDCM Conditional District Commercial Medium. North of the request is Zone CM Commercial Medium. East of the request is Zone CDCM, which is Conditional District Commercial Medium, and LI Light Industrial. South and west of the request are Zone LI Light Industrial. This is the aerial map showing the subject properties currently, contains a warehouse with accessory retail sales. North of the request contains a shopping center and vehicle sales, vehicle sales and service. East of the request contains retail sales and vehicle service. South of the request contains vehicle sales and undeveloped land. West of the request contains vehicle service. The applicant proposed one condition, which is as follows. And in recommending approval, the staff states that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general on the future built form map and as commercial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plans, filling in our framework goal to maintain inventory and market key underutilized sites and structures to private industry and developers and growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed. The proposed CDCM zoning district limits uses to those permitted in the CM zoning district except for cemeteries, animal shelters, shooting ranges, funeral homes and crematoriums, taxidermatist and sexual-oriented businesses. And I can answer any question that you may have.
Any questions of Ms. Harrison? Seeing none. Is there, is the applicant here and would they like a couple of minutes? I like, records show that they have said no, they don't need their two minutes. So, that being said, we will, without objection, close the public hearing. Discussion, motions.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for Jenna, item number Z 2510002. 5307, 5307 West Market Street. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 5307 West Market Street from LI Light Industrial to CDCM Conditional District Commercial Medium to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed CDCM zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impact on adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. All right, that passes, eight to zero. And this approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and appeal paid, it's paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal and all such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting and all adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. The next expedited case is going to be 6 Merith Court. This is a rezoning request from CDPB, BP, Conditional District Business Park to CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial for the property identified as 6 Merith Court, generally described as west of Merith Court and south of Cogger Boulevard. This is 14.79 acres. Item Z 251004. Ms. Harrison.
Thank you again, Ms. Chair Skeens. This is a zoning map showing the subject property is approximately 14.79 acres and located west of Merith Court and south of Cogger Boulevard. This is a rezoning request from CDBP, Conditional District Business Park to CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial. North of the request is Zone CDCH, Conditional District Commercial High, CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, and CDRM18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18. East of the request is Zone CDBP, Conditional District Business Park and CDO, Conditional District Office. South and west of the request are Zone CDBP, Conditional District Business Park. This is the aerial map showing that the property is currently undeveloped. North of the request contains a shopping center, hotels and multifamily dwellings. East of the request contains an office use and medical facility. South of the request contains a warehouse and distribution use. West of the request contains a multifamily, multi-tenant office building. The applicant proposed one condition. And in recommending approval, the staff, staff states that GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's future built form map designates the subject property as urban general and as commercial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plans, filling in our framework goal to maintain inventory and market key underutilized sites and structures to private industry and developers and the filling in our framework, big idea, to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend schools, shop and enjoy free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed CDLI zoning district permits all uses in the LI zoning district except convenience stores with fuel pumps. The proposed uses are broadly compatible with uses present in the surrounding area and higher intensity character of the established development- and higher in density character of the established development in the area. And I can answer any question that you may have.
Any questions of Ms. Harrison on this case? Thank you. If the applicant is here, would they like two minutes to elaborate on the case?
This is Michael Bell, the applicant. We don't need two minutes, but we're happy to answer questions.
All righty, any questions of Mr. Bell? I don't see any. Thank you for your comments. Without objection, then, we will close the public hearing and open it up for any discussion or motions.
I'll make a motion. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at Sixth Merrith Court from CDBP, Conditional District Business Park, to CD-LI, Conditional District Light Industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the actions taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reason. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built format and future land use map. Two, the proposed CDLI zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Turner, seconds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is an eight to zero approval. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Next expedited case I have is portions of 8318 Lazy Sky Lane, 3941 and 3943 Casilis Way, and the Lazy Sky Lane Right of Way. This is item PLP 2540 and Z 251005. This is an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family 5, for the properties identified as portions of 8318 Lazy Sky Lane, 3941 and 3943 Casilis Way, and the Lazy Sky Lane Right of Way, generally described as north of Casilis Way and south of Leeburn Road, and this is .068 acres. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Skeens. So, this is the zoning map of the subject property. First thing I want to point out is all the property to the south of that, that is CDR5. That is all property that's already inside of the city limits. And this triangular piece that is the subject property for tonight was not owned by the developer when all of the property to the south was annexed a few years ago. Since then, this triangular piece has been deeded to the developer, and the developer would like to develop that as portions of three lots within their subdivision. So, that's the reason that this small .068 acre parcel or portions of parcels is before you tonight. This is an annexation and an original zoning request from County Agricultural to City CDR5. North of the request is zoned County RS40. East, south and west of the request are zoned City CDR5. This is the aerial map showing that the properties are currently undeveloped. North of the request contain single family dwellings, and east, south and west of the request contain the subdivision that is under construction. There was one condition that was proposed by the applicant, and this basically requires the triangle to be developed in conjunction with the surrounding subdivision. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's future built form map currently designates the property as ex-urban. If annexed, the designation would be changed to urban general. The future land use map designates the properties as being within the Western Area Plan, which designates the properties as agricultural. The proposed original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plans' filling in our framework, big idea, to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro and the Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed CDR5 zoning district as condition permits uses that are similar to existing uses in the surrounding area. The proposed request also reflects changes in land use patterns and additional public infrastructure along this portion of Leeburn Road since the adoption of the Western Area Plan. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions? Seeing none. Would the applicant like two minutes to elaborate on the request?
The applicant's online, but she only wants to speak if you have questions.
Very good. That being said, without objection, we'll close the public hearing and open up for, and we'll need two motions on this, an annexation and a rezoning.
Commissioner Turner, move for annexation.
Second, Commissioner Maggott.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant the annexation. All in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, eight to zero for the annexation. And now, we need a motion on the rezoning.
I'll do that. It's Z 25-10-005, portions of 8318 Lazy Sky Lane, 3941 and 3943 Casilis Way, and the Lazy Sky Lane Right of Way. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at portions of 8318 Lazy Sky Lane, 3941 and 3943 Casilis Way, and the Lazy Sky Lane Right of Way from County AG Agricultural to City CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family 5, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed City CDR5 zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Stu Nichols, I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. And this is a, represents a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Next expedited case is 105 and 107 South Edwardia Drive. Ms. Harrison.
Thank you, Chair Skeens. This is a zoning map showing the subject properties, which are approximately 1.13 acres and located southeast of South Edwardia Drive and southwest of West Market Street. This is a rezoning request from LI Light Industrial to CDHI, Conditional District Heavy Industrial. North and east of the request are Zone CM, Commercial Medium, and LI Light Industrial. South and west of the request are Zone LI Light Industrial. This is the aerial map showing that the subject properties are currently, currently contain a auto sales and service use. North of the request contains shopping center and auto repair minor. East of the request contains a shopping center and office use. South of the request contains a self-storage unit. West of the request contains an auto sales and service use and a vacant residential structure. The applicant proposed one condition, which is as follows. And in approving the staff, approving the request, the staff states that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general and ex-urban on the future built form map and as commercial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's growing economic competitiveness goal to focus on industrial uses to increase and preserve the inventory of developable sites compatible with corporate and industrial uses. The proposed CDHI zoning district limits uses to special events facilities, all uses permitted in the office use group, and all uses permitted in the vehicle sales and service use group. These uses are compatible with uses present in the surrounding area, and I can answer any question that you may have.
One minute. For purposes of the record, should I read the case, which I failed to do?
Chair Skeens, out of an abundance of caution, I say why not? Let's do it.
Let's go back.
Aha.
There you go.
This is item Z dash 25 dash 10 dash 006. It's a rezoning request from LI Light Industrial to CDHI, Conditional District Heavy Industrial, for the properties identified as 105 and 107 South Edwardia Drive, generally described as southeast of South Edwardia Drive and southwest of West Market Street, 1.13 acres. That makes this legal. Now, Ms. Maggott has a question.
Okay, so on LI, there is, it's not permitted to do special events, and it is permitted on HI. Is there a parking requirement on an HI? And what would that be?
Yes, for the special, if you're asking about the special event facility, yes. That parking ratio is required in the HI district. There are some exemptions in terms of paving of parking lots for heavy industrial uses in the HI district, but in terms of the actual provision of parking, that is still required.
Did I get, do I know what that requirement is?
I can look it up for you.
I'm just curious.
It's going to be the same as eating and drinking establishments. That's the use group it falls under, so it's the one space per 100 square feet.
Thank you.
And I'd like to, Commissioner Turner, I would like to express appreciation for the applicant's outreach efforts that we were able to see in the record.
Very good. And is the applicant here? Would they like two minutes to elaborate on their case? So, the answer is, you're fine? Good, all right. That being said, without objection, we will close the public hearing and move to any comments or motion.
Erica Glass, this is item Z 25-10-006. Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties of 105 and 107 South Edwardia Drive from Light Industrial to CDHI, Conditional District Heavy Industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built format and future land use map. The proposed CDHI zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gill, more seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. And this does constitute a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and an appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, November 21st, 2025 City Council Meeting, and all adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. All right, last expedited case.
Just so you know, we do not have the speakers for Farlow Road on yet at all, so.
All right, we will finish up with the known expedited. So, now, we are on to the Roberson Comer.
Yes, ma'am.
This item PLP 25-42 and Z 25-10-009, this is annexation request for a portion of 801 ZZ, Roberson Comer Road, which is 1.69 acres, and an original zoning and a rezoning request from County AG Agricultural to City R3 Residential Single Family 3 and City PUD Planned Unit Development to City CDRM12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12, for the properties identified as 801, 801 ZZ, 803, and 815 Roberson Comer Road, generally described as south of Roberson Comer Road and north of Interstate 840, consisting of 13.69 acres. Mr. Carter.
All right, thank you, Chair Skeens. So, let me unpack that a little bit. So, this is the zoning map. You'll notice there is a portion that is not in the city limits now. That is the annexation request for 1.69 acres. The rest of the property that is in the city limits is approximately 12 acres. So, that is a total of 13.69 acres with the entire zoning request. Only 1.69 of that being included in that annexation request. So, the subject properties are located south of Roberson Comer Road and north of I 840. This is an annexation and an original zoning and a rezoning request from County Agricultural and City R3 and City Planned Unit Development to City CDRM12. So, there is a portion of this property that is associated with an existing planned unit development. Got information on what the existing use for that planned unit development is in this section, if you're interested at a later time, but I've got that if you need it. So, north of the request is zoned CDRM5. East of the request is planned unit development. South of the request is planned unit development, R3 and CDRM5, and then, west of the request is R3. This is the aerial map, which shows that the property is currently mostly undeveloped. There is a boat and RV storage use on the property as well. North of the request is undeveloped. East of the request is Lake Jeanette. South of the request is I 840, and west of the request are single family dwellings. These are the zoning conditions that were proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's future land use or future built form map currently designates this property as urban general and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning and original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plans' Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the building community connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. The CDRM12 zoning district as conditioned would permit a mix of residential housing types at a density not to exceed 12 units per acre. The proposed uses are similar to existing uses in the surrounding area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, and building height, visual buffers, to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential on adjacent tracks. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Mr. Carter? Is the applicant here and would they like to make any comments? All right, let the record show that the applicant is, is good. So, now, this is two motions once again for any discussion or motion, but we'll need two.
I just wanted to know about the, the, the road, the change, the road is very narrow. Could you just explain what's, what's going to be happening there?
Sure, I can let G-Dot answer that question.
Great.
Sorry, what was the question?
Well, the, the road, when, when I went to look at it, was very, very narrow. So, and I know, I know that there is been conversation about changing the entrance into this development or something, could we, could we just speak to that?
Yes, the development has gone through a sketch plan review, and they will be looking into that, and also looking at the construction of the roadway.
So it's a TRC is in the process of working on that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? If not, we're ready for a motion?
Stu Nichols, I first move for the city of, for item PLP twenty-five dash forty-two to be annexed into the city of Greensboro.
Commissioner Gill, a second.
We have a motion to grant the annexation and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
That is an eight to zero vote for annexation. Now we need a motion on the zoning.
Stu Nichols, I move that as to item Z twenty-five dash ten dash zero-zero-nine, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning and rezoning request of the properties at 801, 801 ZZ, 803, 815, Roberson Comer Road from County AG Agricultural, City R3 Residential Single Family III, and City PUD Planned Unit Development to City CDRM12, Conditional District Residential Multi-Family XII, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 comprehensive plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CD, City CDRM12 zoning district as conditioned permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gill, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the zoning. All in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, so that's an eight to zero zoning. This does involve annexation, so this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 city council meeting. Do we know if we have the opposition online yet for Farlow? Then we are going to move Farlow to the expedited agenda.
Okay.
Okay, this is item PLP twenty-five thirty-nine and Z twenty-five ten zero-zero-three. This is an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III for the property identified as 4304 Farlow Drive and generally described as south of Farlow Drive and west of Youngs Mill Road, 0.46 acres. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you, Chair Skeens. This is the zoning map showing the subject property is approximately 0.46 acres and located south of Farlow Drive and west of Youngs Mills Road, Youngs Mill Road. This is an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III. North of the request is zone County RS40 Residential Single Family and County RS20. East of the request is zone County RS40 Single Family, Residential Single Family. South of the request is zone County CZRS20, Conditional Zoning Residential Single Family. West of the request is zone County RS40 Residential Single Family. This is the aerial map showing that the subject property is currently undeveloped. North, east, and south of the request contain single-family dwellings. West of the request contains undeveloped land and single-family dwellings. This is a straight request, and therefore there's no conditions. And in recommending approval, the staff states that the 20, GSO 2040 comprehensive plan's future built form map designates the subject property as urban general and as residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the comprehensive plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walk of life a variety of quality housing choices, and a filling in our framework, big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend schools, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed R3 zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate low-density single-family detached residential development of up to three dwelling units per acre. The request permits uses that are present on adjacent tracks, and I can answer any question that you may have.
Any questions of Ms. Harrison? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is the applicant here to elaborate, would you like to say anything? All right, record shows that the applicant chose not to speak, so we, without further objection, we're, with any objection actually, we will close the public hearing. Discussion. We need two motions on this one.
Okay, yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for, I move that we annex PLP twenty-five thirty-nine.
Second, Ms. Maggott.
We have a motion and a second to grant the annexation. All in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero, and now we need a motion on the zoning, please.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion for Jen, item number Z twenty-five one zero zero-zero-three at 4304 Farlow Drive. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 4304 Farlow Drive from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 comprehensive plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed City R3 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impact on adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Stu Nichols, I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
That's also unanimous. I believe that takes care of our expedited agenda, and we... And that one did involve an annexation, so I need to make you aware that this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 city council meeting. Okay, thank you. Now, we're on to the first case on our agenda, which is now going to be the last, the 1018 and R1, 1028 South Josephine Boyd Street. This is case Z twenty-five oh nine zero-zero-two. It's a rezoning request from R5 Residential Single Family V to CDRM18, Conditional District Residential Multi-Family 18, for the properties identified as 1018 R1 and 1028 South Josephine Boyd Street, generally described as west of South Josephine Boyd Street and north of Hertford Street, total of 3.6 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair Skeens. And before I get started, just letting everyone know, we do have several people online that wish to speak as well, so in, in addition to people who are in the room.
Okay.
The, the subject properties contain approximately 3.6 acres and are located west of South Josephine Boyd and north of Hertford Street. This is a rezoning request from R5 to Conditional District RM18. North of the request is zoned Conditional District RM26. East and south of the request are zoned R5. West of the request is zoned R5 and planned unit development. This is the aerial map of the subject property, showing that it's currently undeveloped. North of the request contains multifamily dwellings. East, south, and west of the request contain single-family dwellings. This is the subject property as seen from South Josephine Boyd Street. This is the subject property as seen from Midway Street. These are multi, excuse me, multifamily dwellings, located north of the request on South Josephine Boyd Street. This is an example of single-family dwellings located east of the request on South Josephine Boyd Street, zoned R5. This image shows single-family dwellings located south of the request, on South Josephine Boyd Street, zoned R5. This image shows an example of the single-family dwellings located west of the request on Midway Street, zoned R5. This image shows undeveloped land that is located west of the request on Midway Street, also zoned R5. This view is facing north on South Josephine Boyd Street, the subject property is on the left, and this view is facing south on South Josephine Boyd Street, the subject property is on the right. This view is facing south on Midway Street, the subject property is on the left. This is north on Midway Street, the subject property is on the right. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. There were two additional conditions that I'll read into the record, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission will need to accept these conditions. The second, we'll start at the second condition and then go to the third. A fence with a maximum height of six feet shall be constructed and maintained adjacent to the northern property line of 1030 South Josephine Boyd Street, identified with parcel number 11495. And then condition number three, the street planting yard south of South Josephine Boyd Street, oh, sorry, the street planting yard fronting South Josephine Boyd Street shall have an average width of... Feet within the planting rate specified for a type-C buffer yard. It's fifteen. An average width of 15 feet with, can you, do you have that? Okay. Sorry, we have a copy and paste error with that condition. I just, knew that didn't make sense. All right, from the top. The street planting yard fronting South Josephine Boyd Street shall have an average width of 15 feet with the planting rate specified for the type-C buffer yards. You need to accept those conditions.
I'd like to make a, a motion to accept the two additional conditions.
Commissioner Gill, a second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the two additional conditions. All in favor, raise your hands, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we now have three convictions, so we're good to go.
All right. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 comprehensive plan currently designates the property as urban central on the future land use, on the future built form map, and residential multifamily and residential one-to-two family and office conversion on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed CDRM18 zoning district as conditioned would limit available uses to single-family detached dwellings, single-family detached dwellings zero lot line, duplexes, traditional houses, townhouses, and twin homes, which are compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. The proposed overall maximum density is similar to the existing uses in close proximity. However, care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Mr. Carter? Ms. Turner?
Mr. Carter, can you explain the Glenwood, the need for the Glenwood Neighborhood Plan Amendment?
Yes. The Glenwood Neighborhood Plan designates the, the property, hang on, let me grab. So the Glenwood Neighborhood Plan's future land use map designates these properties as residential multifamily, residential and one-to-two family and office conversions. So this would exceed the density that is allowed by that designation and would require an update to the, the map, the future land use map within the Glenwood Neighborhood Plan.
And for clarification, my understanding is that the Glenwood Neighborhood Association was made aware of the change, and it's been over 60 days, and they have not responded with any objections to the change in the plan. Is that correct?
So, yes, the Neighborhood Association was made aware of this several months ago, originally on their, we had not received any official comment from the association at the time of the staff report was prepared. Obviously, you guys have since received some opposition that we forwarded to the commission for consideration this evening. I'm not sure that's coming, if that's coming specifically from the association or just members of the Glenwood Neighborhood, and they can speak to that as part of their opposition.
And, and in our, in our books, you indicated that if no comments are received from the Neighborhood Association within 60 days of receipt of the amendment proposal, the Planning and Zoning Commission may proceed with review and consideration of the proposal to be forwarded to city council for final consideration during a public hearing.
Correct, right. Correct, right. There, enough time had elapsed that this was able to move forward. The commission could take action on it. Again, there obviously are folks that are in opposition this evening and can speak to their opposition to the commission this evening.
But specifically, the association did not respond within that sixty days?
We did not get any official information from the association, correct.
All righty. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, Nick Blackwood, eight oh four Green Valley Road here in Greensboro. Just one point of clarification before we we move forward. I would like to confirm this with staff. I think this bullet point three reflects the previously submitted zoning condition that was originally submitted with our application, not the update to permit all residential uses, which would include apartment homes. So just wanted to, just wanted to make that that point up for the record.
And that part was advertised as part of the hearing this evening. We were not able to hear this request last month because there was that last minute change. There was not time to get the advertising out for it. So, yes, the first condition is different than they originally proposed, but was advertised appropriately for this hearing.
We're good. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Again, this is Nick Blackwood, eight oh four Green Valley Road, here on behalf of the applicant. I have with me this evening Eli Simon, who's part of the developer team, and he can assist with answering any specific questions that you might have as we move along. So to start, if you would flip with me to the second slide. So just included this slide to reiterate the zoning conditions. We're going to get into our neighborhood outreach later in the presentation, but did want to bring your attention to these two newly submitted conditions. The second condition regarding the fence, that condition was added in response to a concern that we heard from the neighboring church to the south. They had some concerns about tenants and guests at our site wandering over to their church and interfering with their congregation in some way. So we were able to add that condition to address that concern. The third condition that you see, that that concern was raised during our neighborhood meeting on September the second. So we heard with respect to the adjacent apartment community to our north, one things that, or one of the things that the neighbors appreciated about that development was that the buildings were were offset from the road, and there was a nice landscaping buffer that obscured the view of those apartments from the right of way. So we were able to reconfigure our site a bit, relocate some of our parking spaces that had been located along that right of way, and provide an enhanced street yard buffer at that type C planting rate, which will allow or require for three under-story trees to be installed in addition to the typical street yard planning requirements. So wanted to do what we could to address that concern. So this slide shows a G I S aerial. This is very similar to what was included in your staff report, but just wanted to highlight some of the existing mix of uses that we have in the Glenwood Neighborhood. So as referenced by staff, we have the campus crossing apartments directly to our north, zone C D R M twenty-six. There's another apartment development immediately north of that development, the Spartan Point Apartments. That's actually zoned office. There's some undeveloped R M eighteen zoning without any zoning conditions to the west of that Spartan Point development, and we have a mix of light industrial and commercial uses there to the north along that that stretch. The church that I referenced with respect to the fencing condition, that's that ACOG Fellowship Ministries that you see to the south. So again, just wanted to include this to show that what we're proposing here, it's not new to the neighborhood, but it's not as though we're intruding in a solely single-family community. There's already a good existing mix of uses here in the area. And we can breeze through this one. Just wanted to highlight those existing zoning districts that you've already seen. So this slide is an illustrative sketch plan that our civil engineer has prepared. This sketch plan has evolved through several iterations, including a new iteration after our community meeting on the second. If you look on the right-hand side of your screen, being the east, along South Josephine Boyd Street, that pocket of trees that you see to the north there, that's part of that enhanced type C buffer that we've added via that new zoning condition. There was also some parking area located in that area that would have basically run up against our northern property line. So those parking spaces have been relocated elsewhere on the site. We're wanting to provide as much of a landscape buffer as we can to obscure the view of our project from South Josephine Boyd Street. So when when this project was originally submitted, and as I alluded to discussing with staff on that, that staff-prepared slide with respect to the the permitted uses, my client had wanted to develop a townhome project here. That's what they had in mind. Now, another key component of this development that they really wanted to emphasize was providing an abundance of parking over and above what the ordinance required. We realized that South Josephine Boyd is is an older, narrow road, same with respect to Midway Street and Fuller Street. So with our civil engineer, we were able to to provide a townhome layout that worked. However, just naturally, given the need for more land to spread those units across because we're going out rather than up, we were just barely able to meet that parking requirement per the ordinance. So we shifted gears a bit. That was a key point that my client wanted to focus on. We're wanting to mitigate our impacts to the fullest extent that we can by providing that additional parking. You can see here on our current sketch, we're showing forty-seven units, two spaces required per unit, so we're required to have ninety-four spaces per the ordinance. The sketch plan is showing one hundred and forty-one spaces. So we're doing what we can to keep our tenants and our guests and their vehicles off of the shoulders of those adjacent public streets. I pulled this future land use plan from the Glenwood Neighborhood Plan. This was adopted along with that plan about fifteen years ago, and you can see kind of towards the middle, small red box with a little arrow. Just wanted to to enlarge that to to show you a better view of what our properties are currently designated per that plan. You can see that about two-thirds of our site is designated per that neighborhood future land use map for multifamily use. So we have an excerpt. What is multifamily use per the Glenwood Neighborhood Plan? Multifamily residential development at a net density of not more than eighteen units an acre, which is what we're proposing here. So just, you know, along with this plan, obviously, this sort of land use discussion with respect to these particular properties and all the other properties that are contained within this plan area, this was discussed amongst the stakeholder groups when this plan was adopted. And it was determined at that point in time, given the nature of the other uses in the area, campus crossing apartments to the north, and the other mix of uses that we already discussed, multifamily development here on our properties at eighteen units an acre was a reasonable request, and it was incorporated as part of this future land use plan by the neighborhood. We did send out a notice letter to every property owner on the city's mailing list. I believe over two hundred letters went out. We also sent a a copy of this letter directly to Ms. Dana Carr, who's affiliated with the Glenwood Neighborhood Association. It's my understanding that she circulated that to her neighborhood group as well. Hosted a neighborhood meeting on September the second, had between ten and fifteen folks attend that meeting, and I think we had a good discussion. There were concerns raised regarding traffic. I think we've done what we can with respect to our site design and our product type to get our vehicles off of the roads. We will not be furthering any sort of existing congestion issues as far as parking on the side of the street. And with a apartment project approximately fifty units, we just don't get anywhere close to triggering a traffic study requirement as far as a traffic output with respect to to our project. So that said, if the rezoning is approved, we'll go through the site plan review process, and it may very well be the case that G dot imposes some some traffic safety requirements as part of that site plan review process. But we just did not get anywhere near the the unit count to trigger a traffic impact study requirement in connection with our application. So did briefly want to touch on just a couple of general overarching points with respect to the the city's comprehensive plan and some of the housing goals that we're well familiar with that the city's put in place here recently. So this is a textbook infill case. We have almost an identical type of development right next door. We have the infrastructure in place, utilities. If we were to take this project and place it somewhere further out of, out of, you know, out of reach of where the the city limits are, we're extending utilities, extending city services, making those transportation improvements further out when everything that we need to support this project is right here, ready for this site now. And I think this type of, this type of infill development, this type of project in a location like this where we're not, you know, it's consistent with what's already in the area, these are the types of projects that I believe as a city we need to be comfortable with if we're going to put a dent in our our ten thousand home goal over the next five years. So with that, again, Eli's here. He's available to answer any specific questions with respect to the design. And other than that, I'm happy to to try and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Mr. Blackwood?
I just wanted to, let's see, adjacent to this is the campus crossing south, and that is an R M twenty-six. It is a three-story.
That's correct.
I believe, okay. And then to the back of it is the Spartan Point, which is the R M eighteen. I can't remember. I think it was three, three-story as well.
I I don't want to just speak out of turn. I'm not sure about the height of the Spartan Point project.
It is? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Not at this time.
All right.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this request? I don't see any, so we will move to the opposition. And we have some people online. What I'm going to suggest is that the people that want to speak in opposition, if you'll move over here by the windows to save walking time, and we'll, we'll alternate if that's okay with Mr. Carter. And again, remember, it's a total of ten minutes.
Can you have Dana Carr first, Neighborhood Association president?
We do have Dana Carr online, and she is the Neighborhood Association president, yes.
Do we want?
I'm requesting her to unmute and turn her camera on. There she is.
Do you want me to share first, or do you want to start with folks in the room?
You're, you're, you're up and moving here. If you'd state your name and address, please.
Great. My name is Dana Carr. I live at fifteen eleven McCormick Street in Greensboro in Glenwood. I am the president of the Greater Glenwood Neighborhood Association. I understand that it was stated that if the Neighborhood Association did not email back, that the plan would go forward. That was not communicated to us. We were invited to provide feedback and comments, and we have neighbors here who are ready to do that. And so I just wanted to make that point of clarification that 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 wasn't made clear. But in general, I'll say while our experience with the attorney has been fine, our experience with the developer is that they do not seem abundantly concerned with the the best interest of the neighborhood. They've made clear that their goal in this process, and I quote, is to maximize profit. And, yeah, have have shown little regard in our meetings about how to adequately include all of the people who have typically lived in the neighborhood. Since we had a meeting with them, neighbors expressed concerns, and to my knowledge, they haven't circled back with adjusted architectural drawings or follow-up for any of the major pieces that we asked questions about. So I'll just open with that statement of of we do have concerns, and there are neighbors here this evening that are ready to speak on each of those.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Can we hear from the first person in line here in chambers?
Hi. My name's Nancy Lenk. I live at ten oh five South Josephine Boyd Street, about one block north of the proposed zoning change parcels. I've lived here for fifteen years, but have been associated with this street for forty, because my mother has lived there for forty years, living at ten ten South Josephine Boyd. And that apartment is behind her, directly behind her house, and it is an eyesore, just so you know. So over the past forty years, I've seen the traffic on our street grow and grow and get faster and faster. Today, I join with my neighbors in opposing the proposed development and would like to see the land remain as it is. While I understand the city's goal of building ten thousand housing units, we should not continue to build high-density living with low-density streets. Our street is called a collector's street, but that does not mean it's no longer residential. Single-family homes line our street. Our street has children, pets, and many pedestrians walking along the sidewalks. We have students walking to U N C G and people walking to Gate City Boulevard to get the bus to work. It's already risky to cross the street from one side to the other. South Josephine Boyd has a serious traffic and speeding problem. After we, as a community, requested traffic management controls be implemented, we recently got our score back from the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program's study of our street. Our score was sixty-one, one of the highest streets in the city. You need a score of forty to qualify for the program. This scorecard reflects the risk of traffic fatalities as evidenced by a high volume of traffic and a lot of speeding. Last year, a hit-and-run driver hit a pedestrian, which, actually, right across the street from this proposed site, which included serious life-threatening injuries to this neighbor. We're concerned that adding a development at the proposed location would add to the volume of cars, contributing to the problems we already have with traffic and speeding. We heard from the developer that they were not required to complete a transportation impact study because they will only add a hundred cars per day. However, the plan they showed us had the capacity to have a hundred and fifty there. Now they're saying they want a hundred and forty parking spots, but they're only going to have forty-something units. So that sounds like a lot of guest parking. So it sounds like they might be having more people per unit than they're actually reflecting in their plan. So what's to stop them from renting apartments to three occupants per unit? Guests could still park on the street, this parking on the street. A fifty-one-unit complex should realistically have about seventy-six parking spaces, and this makes me wonder why they feel they need so many. Plans do change, and we would like to be protected. Before you make a decision on this development, we urge you to require a traffic study and for you to require them to be responsible for a plan and funding to ameliorate any negative effects their extra cars would add to our already busy street. Adding up to a hundred and fifty more cars going in and out on a regular basis is just not good for our neighborhood and our neighbors. Thank you. And, you know, the, you know, we're getting ready to to meet with the city D O T about our traffic plan, so adding more cars at this time is not a good idea.
Thank you, Ms. Lenk. The next person online, please.
Hi.
Online, we're alternating.
Online.
Please, excuse me.
The next person we have online, Adam Braun.
Hey, good evening. I'm Adam Brown. I live at ten fifteen Portland Street, which is one block away from this new development, and I can definitely echo what she said about the traffic. It's just gotten worse. It's gotten dangerous. This doesn't seem in keeping with this lovely neighborhood. I love this neighborhood. with this lovely neighborhood. I love this neighborhood, and we all love each other here, and I don't think this is the correct way to grow. They don't seem to care about, you know, this neighborhood at all. I doubt they've ever really been here. So I'll yield the time to whoever else can articulate this better, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next in chambers.
So first, I just want to clarify that I'm on the Neighborhood Association.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. My name, Casey Thomas, address 1041 South Josephine Boyd Street, right across from the proposed development.
Okay.
And first, I want to clarify that our Neighborhood Association President did send me screenshots of emails. None of them said you have 60 days to respond to a proposed change to your neighborhood plan. She was very concerned, you heard. She was like, "We did not approve this." And the vice president was just texting me, asking, "Who did this go to?" So even if that was their intent, it was certainly not something that people, even in the meeting that a bunch of people attended with them on September 2nd, were told by like the city, "Look, you've got 60 days for your Neighborhood Association to respond. We're going to change your neighborhood plan." The other thing is that the neighborhood plan, as it's reflected, you saw on the map with the pink and the orange, most of that that abuts our street, that's visible from our street, is for our future land use is supposed to be one, like single-family or one-to-two-family or office. That's what it said. And that's what the majority of the development facing our road is zoned for in the future land use map. Behind it is multifamily there. And so, I mean, it's not necessarily in keeping with what the 2040 plan is to just go ahead and make the entire thing very dense, multi-use, multi-property, multifamily property, because that's not what our neighbors got together with the city planners and like worked really hard to put together all those years ago. And the other piece is around trees. Did you all get an email that I sent forwarded to you about that? Okay. So Glenwood is an area that is on the city's priority list for areas that they want to prevent deforestation and add more trees. And that particular part of the neighborhood, that census tract, has had trees decrease significantly. Did you see the figures that I sent you with that? And so that's one of the things. My kid is two and a half years old. He has asthma. We are really actively working with the city to decrease the amount of traffic that's on the street. I know they said that it's not that much of a concern with the amount of people they're planning to have, but plans change, right? As we're seeing tonight, they're like changing, they're coming to you to change their plan. It's not a thing about whether they're honest or not, but we think that the traffic study requirement should reflect the capacity that they will have to put people on the lot, not what their current plans are today. And so we would like to have that traffic study. My kid does not play with the kids across the street, not because we don't like them, but because we're terrified that he's going to see his little friend and try to like go across the street. And so just adding more density and adding more cars to that really concerns us and our family. Thank you so much. I'll pass it to the next people.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Next person online.
Next person online is Ms. Valerie Warren.
Can we see her? Thank you.
Hey, y'all. Hi. Sorry about that. My name is Valerie Warren. I live at 1043 South Josephine Boyd Street, right across the street from the proposed development. I've lived here since 2001, so almost a quarter of a century, and my kids grew up here. We have been concerned about traffic the whole time. It gets worse and worse. Actually, it wasn't so many years ago that I was next door at Casey's house, and someone ran into three cars parked across the street while we were just sitting there. So traffic is absolutely a concern, and I think in addition to like the speed and the amount of traffic, just thinking about like the lack of access points to cross beneath the train tracks, it creates like a lot of traffic at like key parts of the day. And so we're just talking about a quality of life issue. I also want to underscore what Casey lifted up about the tree cover. Tree cover is a major factor when it comes to resilience in the face of climate change. We're really blessed in our neighborhood to have beautiful, beautiful, like mature tree cover, but unfortunately, because our power lines are also exposed, Duke Power has come through and like cut out half of every tree facing a major road. And I know that isn't something in the purview of this panel, but the ability of us to maintain our mature tree cover and to maintain the cooling factor that offers our community is really important to our overall quality of life. My kids also had asthma growing up. I have asthma. The air quality is a real issue. And so I just really hope that, number one, we insist on a traffic study because of the overall situation we're facing and that we just put a pause on this development while we think about the overall status of like our mature tree cover. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Time is up. All right. We now will move, and we've got one person left in chambers, and you'll be able to speak when we get into the rebuttal period. We're now going to move to five minutes of rebuttal, first from the applicant.
Again, this is Nick Blackwood, 804 Green Valley Road. Just wanted to respond to a couple of the points that you heard from opposition. First, with respect to the changing plans and the number of units, if you just look at our requested RM 18 density across the 3.06 acres, we're capped at about 55 units, and that's notwithstanding development standards and square footage requirements for the units. So at the very maximum, we're looking at 55 units. Our current sketch is showing 47. The neighbors saw an iteration with 51 during the neighborhood meeting. We're going to be somewhere in that ballpark. It's not as if we're going to be able to leave this meeting tonight and go stick 200 units there. And that, around 50 units, that just in the grand scheme of things with respect to traffic, is just nowhere near the density that would necessitate a traffic study at this stage. That, traffic safety concerns and road improvements, right-of-way dedication, turn lanes, all of that sort of thing will certainly be considered, but it will be considered during the site plan review process rather than in connection with this zoning because GDOT determined that no traffic study was required, indicating that the infrastructure in the area and our density can more or less accommodate what we're proposing. With respect to the neighborhood plan and the portion of our property, about a third of our site is designated for that one-to-two-family and office conversion, we understand that that at some point in time, about 15 years ago, our southern property was more or less split-zoned, if you will, with respect to these two differing future land use designations. And we've taken that into account. So what we've done is, to the extent that we can, we have stacked the bulk of our multifamily improvements to the western portion of the site where that RM 18 zoning was designated on the plan. And like I said earlier in the presentation, we've actually relocated some parking spaces that were pressed up against the South Josephine Boyd Street right-of-way and replaced that with an enhanced street-yard buffer and some additional green space and open space where we can maintain some more vegetation. The concern with respect to tree conservation, and certainly appreciate that, again, that's another technical point to be reviewed as a design standard in connection with the site plan review process in review of the ordinance. So there's no zoning condition that we could offer here this evening before we get on the ground, before we go through the site plan review process, to comfortably assure that any particular tree scattered throughout the property would be preserved. But I can certainly attest that during the site plan review process, we will be required to demonstrate a certain percentage of tree conservation area, and we're going to be required in addition to that to install a type-C landscaping buffer along our western property line and southern property line, similarly to the type-C buffer that we've conditioned on the right-of-way frontage on South Josephine Boyd. So it's not as if this is just going to be a clear-cut site without any vegetation whatsoever. We just don't know at this stage, until we get through the site plan review process, what that's going to look like. I'm so happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, and I appreciate the pretty mouth, but I need an additional explanation on it.
Okay.
This inset, the purple, there's two small purple spots
Yes.
that are supposed to be one-to-two-family or an office conversion. The bulk of the orange is designed to be residential, multifamily.
Correct.
So I think your argument has been the bulk of the piece of property does meet the Glenwood area plan.
Correct. Yeah. So our entire northern parcel is entirely designated for that 18-unit and acre multifamily use. Our southern parcel, it's more or less half and half. So to effectuate the plan as drafted, it would really require a subdivision of that southern parcel and two differing land uses on that one piece of land in order to address both the multifamily component and the one-to-two-family and office conversion component. So we feel just given that two-thirds of what of our site is consistent with what we're requesting and more or less aligns with what was contemplated when this plan was adopted.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So are there sidewalks on Josephine Boyd? Are there sidewalks on both sides of the road? One side of the road? No?
So I'm not sure about existing sidewalks, but as part of our site plan review process, we will be required to install sidewalks on our public frontage.
Both sides? Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Blackwood? All righty.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, the opposition has five minutes of rebuttal. We had one gentleman who did not get to speak during the regular timeframe, so if you'd come forward and give your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Franklin Lewis. I live at 1032 South Josephine Boyd Street. The property that was in the picture, that's my property. It's also boundaries, the church, ACOG Fellowship Ministry, for which I'm a member. I've been living there for over 15 years.
Come back to the mic, please, so we can hear you.
I've been living there for over 15 years. I've seen growth, and I've seen some of the developments. My concern is, I was there one night, woken, and I heard a banging, and when I ran outside, I saw a gentleman lying on the street, and the car had taken off, so nobody recognized who hit the gentleman. That street is a very busy street during six and eight. I may get emotional because developers do not understand how we have to live. They are there to make a profit. We are not against profiting. We are not against development, but considerations should be given to us. Where would the children play who come in to live there? What about the senior folks who have been living in Glenwood for 50-plus years? Children will be running in and out of the yard. What would the developer do? The architectural design is beautiful, but we cannot understand it. Why not attach a copy of the complete dwelling plan with all the houses, the roadway, the buffet park? Attach it to one of this so that we could sit in our meetings and discuss it. Here is where the driveway is going to be. Here is where the walkway is going to be. I am objecting to you with a hard no. There is no way you could put those many houses to the back of my property and to the front of my property, and don't expect congestion. It's not going to happen. The developer could never convince me that they could take care of that, not even a little park. The children is going to play in the church property. I'm a member of that church and have been there for 15 years. We thankful for the, they're going to put up a fence, but we need more than that. We need time so we can sit with the community and discuss what is happening here. Please remember the seniors. They spend all their life on the property. Are we going to run them away for a few dollars? For a few dollars? 50 years, 60 years? Opposite me is a senior person. Motorbike noise could send her crazy. Who cares?
Mr. Lewis, I see your passion. I hear your passion, but you've used up more than half of the time that's allocated, and there's two more people to speak. So I think you're kind of repeating what others have said.
Yes. I am okay, and that's all I have to say. I'm a hard no for that project right now. No.
Got it.
We also have Ms. Susan Lindsay online.
Okay. Then we need to hear from her. We have not heard from her yet.
Ms. Lindsay, can you turn your microphone on? I've asked her to unmute, and she hasn't yet, so I might want to take the next person in line.
All right. Next person in line in chambers, please.
So the part of the property that is currently zoned single-family and like one-to-two units there or office and whatnot, why not leave that the way it is and require that the rest of it, I mean, the rest of it, if you just deny the request, can still be multifamily, contributing to the city plan and the 2040 and the 10,000 homes that we're trying to get to, but also still respect the neighborhood plan. I'm a big fan of splitting the baby and disappointing people equally.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Do we have anybody unmuted or camera? Mr. Carter?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Since Casey's willing to split the bath water or whatever. Look, I think that if they're going to put multifamily housing on the west side, then the entrance to that should be on the west side and not on South Josephine Boyd. It's dangerous. When I try to get in and out of my driveway, sometimes I have to wait for 21 cars to go by, and I put my blinker on, I slow down, and when I make a left turn into my driveway, people zoom by. And so it's like, this is, we're not kidding when we talk about the traffic. So adding, I don't care, you know, you could say I have a driveway and put the housing all the way here, but if they're still using this street and that driveway, that doesn't matter where the buildings are located. They're still going to be going in and out of that driveway. And we're in the process of trying to get traffic control on our street, so we don't need to be adding more at this point. And the trees, we've lost 130 trees to UNCG's development in our neighborhood in the past 10 years, and we have big, older trees. Greensboro needs those trees, and don't attack older neighborhoods.
Thank you. That closes our public hearing. So now we are open to questions, comments, and I would like to hear some comments. We've had some good points made, so.
I had a question for staff first. With the notification that went out, was there mention about the 60 days in corresponding back about the Glenwood plan?
The reference to the 60 days is in the Glenwood plan itself that talks about if there are amendments to that.
Wait, I can't hear you. I'm sorry. I'm having trouble hearing.
I said the reference to the 60-day window is in the Glenwood plan, neighborhood plan itself. It speaks to that if a plan amendment is triggered, that the city would communicate with the neighborhood and that the neighborhood would have up to 60 days to make comment on the plan. So there's not an automatic, if you hear from the neighborhood or not, that the plan is automatically amended. It still goes through the normal rezoning process and conversations on there with that. I am actually also looking at emails as well, trying to verify that. I can't fully answer that question. The more recent communications were simply that we're trying to move forward with getting everything together to present this to the commission, and we needed to know if you had any official comment or not, and we didn't get any response from that information. I have to go back further in the emails. I can't do it here very easily to see about that question, but certainly we'll have an answer for that, for the council level, if we don't have it for the commission. if we don't have it for the commission. And I think they turned one to wait on that as well.
If I may, Commissioner Maggitt, just to add on to what Mike indicated a minute ago. I think it's important to bear in mind as well that that opportunity for comment is a point in the process, but in no way, shape, or form changes the discretion that the board has to make a policy decision on the propriety of the current plan versus a potential amendment to it and the rezoning writ large, right? Same sort of discretion and policy decision that you always have.
And they had more than 60 days, right? I mean, they had a lengthy period of time, 60, 90 days?
This conversation has gone longer than that with the developer and with information from the city has provided. But again, looking through information, I'm not sure we made complete clarification on that. It's in the plan itself, but in terms of some of our communications. So I do apologize to the neighborhood if that was not clear about that timeframe. Again, it was just to get comments from the neighborhood, if they had comments. And so obviously, we have some concern this evening it's being expressed.
But what I'm saying is they had plenty of time.
They've been aware of this conversation for a while, yes. I think it's all I can speak to.
Erica Glass, I will not be supporting this application. I think the residents have expressed very well their apprehension or objection to this application. My motto that I express sometimes is you don't do things or vote on things just because you can. It may meet the requirements. The staff has recommended this application, but I think it is something to be considered for those individuals who actually live in this neighborhood. The concerns about traffic, I know that that question has been answered about whether that triggers a traffic study, but you do have to consider the thoughts of these individuals. I think this is a fairly tight area. Again, I understand the, you know, it meets the requirements regarding density, et cetera. But I do have concerns regarding the compactness of this area, that there are a lot of moving parts that may have not been able to articulate, been articulated in the application. And so I will not be supporting this.
Ms. Maggitt?
Let me see. So I know there was some note about tree, from the tree conservation, saying that, I think we all received this. At the stage of this development, a tree survey is not required by the Land Development Ordinance. It would not be required and so forth. It says the site development will then require a landscape plan that shows all planting requirements in the LDO format. So they're saying that the addition of trees?
Yeah, I think, just to add to that information, what the municipal arbiters was trying to get to was a full tree survey where you actually looked at every single individual tree on the property. It's not something the city could require as part of this conversation. There is going to be tree conservation required as part of multifamily development. And based upon the size of this lot, it's 5% of the lot area has to be conserved as part of the development. Some of that conservation can occur in those planting yards, and so it can meet part of the required plantings to preserve existing trees. So it does present incentive to preserve existing trees to meet that versus having to create new landscaping areas on there. And of course, the condition asked for tonight with the street yard would move it from, normally that would be a 10-foot-wide street yard that's required by the ordinance. The condition moves it to the type C, which is a 15-foot wide. And there was noted it would add under-story trees to that required buffer yard that's not required in the street yard now, just to give some reference on those things.
And I remembered originally that there was like, the applicant was concerned about overpark to ensure enough parking would be, is that the reason why we've moved it now from 94 required spaces to 141? Because they wanted to fulfill that desire?
The city can only require its minimum requirements based upon the total number of units and the configuration of those units on there. And this zoning doesn't specify that. So there's nothing I can speak to directly as to say what that number the city must require. If someone chooses to park additional on that, that is their purview to do that, but the city will only require whatever the minimum is for the ordinance.
So I do want to say a few things, a few quick points. Number one, I do appreciate the Glenwood Association. I know things have evolved over the past 10 to 15 years, especially with some of the major developments. I also understand that this is adjacent to a, I won't say major, but let's say a pseudo corridor. At about a five-mile radius, you have several colleges and universities. But with respect to that also, I would say our college population here in Greensboro is about 16%. And it will continue to grow. And this represents an area of opportunity for not only our college students, but also for students. We want people to remain in Greensboro. We lose too many people when they graduate to other cities. I also recognize the fact that we're right beside, this property is adjacent to a CDRM 26. And so to me, speaking, this shows consistency with land use, but it also represents an infill. But with respect to what you all have said, the traffic does give me grave concern. And the neighbors are actively speaking, but I'm also thinking about the growth that it represents and the consistency. So I have no idea how I'm going to vote at this point. But I do want to share that those are my five points. The main concern, and I probably am illegal to say this, but the traffic does alarm me. And I would love for the area to be a walkable area. I cannot redesign that particular area. But I am going to go forward and say that I see the potential that this neighborhood has as it has evolved over the years. And I welcome continued discussion. I don't know how I'm going to vote, so we'll see.
I just want to get a little clarity. So an R5 on three acres would mean that, as it stands right now, you could build 15 homes on that three acres?
That would be the allowable density. You wouldn't need to obviously create lots on a public street, so that probably actually limits how much you could do.
So the frontage might not agree to that. Okay, all right. I'm getting there slowly, surely.
Good questions.
Let's see. Okay, so what I heard from everyone speaking in the neighborhood was a lot of concerns about the trees, the traffic, the speeding. You know, I don't think the speeding is something that we can be concerned about, but of course, it's something I think that GDOT is tending to or that's something to speak to your city council person about. Could you put in a light or something to help with the speeding? The trees were discussed, and I think the applicant has agreed to add some trees. And also, the, we heard about the conservation. I keep pressing the wrong button. GDOT was not required. That's what I heard, correct? So at this point, I think that, I hear the applicant has done quite a lot in terms of trying to resolve the concerns that he could do in terms of land use. I'm just thinking land use here when I'm babbling on like this. But anyhow, so the trees and the traffic and the speeding, we can't really be concerned about. But they have, they have done added conditions in terms of blockage with a high fence and additional planting. And I think this is a very difficult kind of situation, because we have the Glenwood Neighborhood Plan, which is like two-thirds of the property is multifamily and one-third is one or two, single-family. And I know, I really feel for you as neighbors, and I hate that there's so much traffic going down this street. I really do. Maybe you can speak to your city council.